I'd like to call to order this workshop of the council of the Borough of Gettysburg. For Monday, January 27th, 2025, we don't have any opening announcements or special presentations, so we'll go directly to public comment. This first public comment section of the evening is reserved to items appearing on tonight's agenda. We need you to use the podium, speak clearly into the microphone, please state your name and address of residence. Please limit yourself to five minutes. If you wish to speak about an item that's not on tonight's agenda, we welcome you to do so at the second public comment section at the end of tonight's meeting. Is there any public comment on tonight's agenda items?
Sharon Monahan, West Broadway. So, nothing that is discussed tonight that is on the agenda is allowed to be discussed in public comment after the items on the agenda? Could you clarify that, please?
If you would like to speak now, it needs to be about something on the agenda. If you're here to speak about something that's not on tonight's agenda, you can do so at the end of the meeting, the same as every other meeting.
Okay, but you can't speak about something on the agenda at the end of the meeting?
Certainly you can.
Oh, you can't?
Good evening. Dave Pedders, 13 Lincoln Square, Gettysburg. First of all, I want to thank you all for the jobs you guys do. It's an endless task, and we don't recognize you enough for it. I'm looking forward to the end of the agenda and finding out the plans about Lincoln Square. And I'm particularly interested in how it affects parking in Gettysburg, since it's a major revenue source for the borough, and whatever plans might exist to make up for the lost parking that's going to come, and if there's other opportunities to seek revenue other than just parking. But that's probably not on the agenda. But thank you again. I'm sure I'll talk to you in the next comment.
Thank you, sir. Public comment. Does anybody else wish to speak on any items appearing on tonight's agenda? Last chance. Okay, we will move on to an update on the Gettysburg inner loop phase B2B.
Good evening, council. I'm going to keep this pretty brief tonight, just give you a little bit of an update where we stand on a few things. The good news is the boring is done. It was successful, both the water bore and the stormwater bore is complete. The street remained closed until they get some of the tie-ins with the pipe work on both sides of the railroad tracks adjacent to the boring completed, and that'll probably stay closed all of this week and potentially even into next week. At that point in time, we'll go back to the day-to-day closures. There's still about a month of work to do yet, so we're still going to have work out there through the end of February and probably even into March. That actually marries up pretty well with the next phase of this project. As you know, the CDBG portion of this project is out to bid currently. We'll be opening bids at your February meeting, and we'll be ready to go to construction in March, right whenever they're finished up with the utility work. So, the schedule's working out pretty well there. It's just, like I said, I wanted to give you a quick update on where we stand, and open to any questions if you have any.
Any questions for Mr. Kleba?
At what point should we expect to see vehicles start to be able to cross the tracks?
Next week. Yeah, it looks like they're going to be paving. We have a Gantt chart that the contractor provided us. I was just going over it with Robbie a little bit, but they are looking to pave the boring pits on Monday and Tuesday of next week, and that's kind of the critical element to open it up to traffic. So, weather permitting, everything goes good this week. By mid to end of the week next week, we should be open to traffic again, and that'll be...
Flagged?
Flagged, and there'll still be day-to-day closures. You know, throughout the rest of this project, all of February, to be clear, there's still going to be day-to-day street closures, and then they'll be open at the end of each day at like four or five o'clock when they go home, and it'll be open in the evenings and on the weekends.
Great. Anybody have any further questions? All right, thank you, Chad.
Sure.
Takes us to new business. We're going to start with Mr. Whitmore. We will be discussing sidewalk ordinance revisions. Tonight, we're going to be looking at sidewalk clutter and A-frame signs.
Good evening. As you can see from the image that the manager's pulled up, this is just a small piece of the overall sidewalk puzzle, but it previously was identified as an area to explore. With that in mind, staff reviewed the Chapter 21 sidewalks ordinance. There are a few instances where it appears that language could be updated to allow for ADA compliance to be achieved, similar to what has occurred with the sign ordinance, referencing the Americans with Disabilities Act, and specifically calling for the five-foot minimum width requirements, and identifying the opportunity where the windows widths cannot be met, the allowance for a passing lane in conformance with that act. That would be a relatively minor change. We would be able to also probably pair this with the ticketing ordinance. I'll be meeting with the borough solicitor in the coming days to discuss that aspect of it, and this would be something where ticketing, as opposed to citation, would most likely be prudent as it relates to portable signage. We generally aren't going to see permanent signage installed in the sidewalks. It will happen every once in a while, but, and that's when the citation process is something that can also be utilized. But for things that we can move, our practice is to, A, move them out of the public right-of-way onto the private property if at all possible, but then just making sure the owner is aware of their needs for compliance. So, when it comes to signage, we're able to reference the sign ordinance, being able to reference the sidewalk ordinance for other impediments, be it street furniture or other just objects in the street, in the sidewalk travelway. We'd be able to regulate it and ensure that we're at least providing federally mandated widths for travel lanes. Additionally, in terms of the sidewalk ordinance, there are provisions that related to the tree census that was completed, and going through that analysis, this was not included with the packet material, but in going through that analysis, there are plenty of opportunities to look at our street tree network for those that have been identified in a poor condition, and potentially utilizing grant funds or other sources of state and federal funds to be able to do a, like, urban tree project whereby we're able to leverage, what is this, DCNR grant funding. So, there's opportunities that we could also look at to assist with the impediments that were created as a part of the overall infrastructure. And as most of the complaints are about the sidewalk, often the owner's complaints are about the street trees, so this would be something that we can also investigate. At this time, I think all I'm doing is looking for consensus on moving forward to getting to, hopefully in February, an ordinance, if not February, March, before you for the work session.
So, what are the questions you would like us to consider this evening?
Just if, going with updated ADA compliance language in chapters 21, 201, 205, and 208 would be prudent.
Okay. You've all had a chance to review the materials in our packets. We have discussed this several times. I'd say going back four years or more, the question of what to do in and around things that can obstruct the sidewalk, specifically the A-frame signs, furniture, merchandise, et cetera. There were times where certain members advocated for elimination of all impediments. That was not met with wide acclaim. So, we had in the past discussed simply following existing federal law when it comes to maintaining clear passage. So, I'm just looking for any input from members as to whether they want to continue to adhere with the, adhere to the ADA language when it comes to these regulations, or if there's some other standard you would like to set.
What's the exact ADA language with signs? Is it no instance can signage limit sidewalk width to less than three feet, or is it five feet?
I can, you are not allowed to go below three feet. There's provision that allows, for instances where you're allowed to be between three feet and five feet of navigable travelway. The standard, though, is five feet or more width. Those three to five feet, there's specific distance requirement. I want, I believe it's 250 feet, but this is going from memory, so once we're able to provide you with that information directly, we'll give you the exact distance requirements. But you have to be able to provide an area to pass, and there's specific design criteria to establish that passing area in the ADA itself. The idea is you have to have, basically allowing for physical passage of two individuals creates the challenge.
What's our current ordinance? Is it, is it five feet?
As it is existing, my understanding is there is no regulation. The borough solicitor can provide the, I guess, the exact practice of that.
I think when it was originally drafted, it was in 1905, so I'm fairly certain the ADA was not on the council's mind when that, it has been modified, but I think the last modification was in the early 1990s and so forth, so there is no actual width prescribed. It is required, or there is a requirement, because sidewalks are essentially the passageways of the public pedestrians, and to keep it clear, and the law even requires, you know, that you must keep sidewalks clear of obstructions that would stop the, that would impede individuals from being able to use it safely, as that is the purpose of sidewalks, if you will. But there is no specific measurements or requirements in the current sidewalk ordinance.
Mr. Moon, may I chime in there on that, just to provide some clarity? So, we have several ordinances that have different numbers in it, in terms of the width. So, whenever you're asking about the width requirement for a sidewalk, you have to make sure you're separating that for the width of the sidewalk versus the width of ADA compliance. Those are two different things. We have places in our ordinance that require 16-foot sidewalks, for instance, like on the square. That doesn't mean the whole 16 feet has to be ADA compliant. As John noted, the industry standard is a five-foot clear space for ADA compliance, and that's so that every 200 feet, you don't have to have this passing zone. But there is some provisions that allows you to go down to just like one foot distance at three feet, so like if a person with a wheelchair could take their hand off of the wheel, get past the telephone pole without skinning their knuckles, and then put their hand back on the wheel. That's the intent of that, like, one foot distance at three feet, but otherwise, it's got to go right back to five feet. So, the clear zone in the, they call it the PROWAG, you've heard me say that acronym before, the Public Right Of Ways Accessibility Guidelines, that says four feet minimum. So, there's all these different numbers, right? We have, I think in our zoning ordinance, it says five feet, in our SADO, it says four feet. We have a street and sidewalk ordinance that uses different numbers. There isn't one clear and concise number that you should use here, and I'm not trying to confuse you with all of these different numbers, but I want to make sure that it's clear that the sidewalk, the required sidewalk width isn't necessarily the same as ADA compliance. I think what the main goal of this conversation is to make sure that there's ADA compliance, because that really trumps the other requirements that we have.
It does, whether we have it in an ordinance or not. ADA would be a superior legislation that we must comply with, so, despite what is in the ordinance. So, making the ordinance ADA compliant, of course, is a good idea, but the ADA does
So, five feet seems to be the minimum we could aspire to.
That's the tech, that's the industry standard.
Right. So, we could keep it at five feet per current guidance, or we could choose to go be more I'm okay with five feet, sticking to what the federal guidelines stipulate.
I'm in agreement of the five feet. I think it's very difficult, as I said before in a workshop session, I believe, about this very topic, that it's very difficult, because as we all know, some of our sidewalks in the borough are naturally just built wider than others, and some of them, just specifically in downtown, within the first two blocks of the square, for example, some of that property line from the curb, from the street curb to the actual property, for example, can be the property of a business owner or a property owner, et cetera. It might be a stoop, it might be a staircase, it might be that there's a tree well that's ours, that's making that distance from the curb to their actual property smaller and smaller in some places, therefore bottlenecking the pedestrian traffic, especially if there are other things out there, such as signs, furniture. It, you know, it just depends upon which street we're talking about, but, but that, you know, and sometimes people may think, well, the property is the building. Well, no. If the building also has a stoop or a staircase to the front door, that staircase is jetting out onto the sidewalk. So, technically, whose property is that stair, well, that staircase? And it's making that sidewalk narrower in some cases. So, I agree that the five feet minimum is what we should be hoping for, and which is going to be difficult.
I would need to see what the exact wording is that's being proposed, and how that would change what's already written, if there is anything. Because I know we looked at this when we did the sign ordinance before.
In quite a lot of detail.
Yeah. And if I may add one more thing, so, devil's in the details, right? And so, the exact language, whenever it comes out, you'll be able to see, there's going to be some caveats. All of Cool Park is basically four-foot sidewalks. So, we're not necessarily suggesting that we're going to start tearing out all of those sidewalks and making them five feet. But what we are saying is that whenever there's any work done to any of those, if they don't have a passing zone every 200 feet, then something has to be done. There's an argument that may be made in Cool Park where four feet may be the appropriate number, because it usually has a grass strip that's two to three feet. So, when you're walking beside two people, four-foot paved sidewalk is really four-foot paved sidewalk plus the three-foot grass strip, right? It feels different, there's more space there. You don't have that restriction. I think the five feet that's being suggested is more specific to the clutter, you know, on the sidewalks, to make, maintain that there's always a clear space of five feet in the downtown-type sidewalks, not necessarily applied to like the Cool Park regions. So, the devil's in the detail, there's going to be a lot of, you know, specifics, and it might be a little bit different here than it is here.
I was going to say, I think it's prudent that we move ahead with the five feet, especially in light of what Chad just pointed out with respect to the, undoubtedly, the changes that will be undoubtable to the sidewalks in the future. I think we need to get ahead of it.
Okay. Do you have what you need there?
I'll be working with the borough solicitor then on ordinance language to get to you as soon as possible, the next available council workshop.
Thank you, sir. So, we have a parking coupon solution. We have a presentation by Pay by Phone.
Thank you. Is this on?
It is, if you just kind of pull it down towards yourself.
I'm going to see if this, cool, it works. So, I have met a few of you. I haven't met, obviously, everybody. My name is Teresa Trussell, and I am with Pay by Phone. I am the Director of Client Success, so I take care of our existing clients. And when I first joined Pay by Phone five and a half years ago, I actually was in a sales role at that time. So, I also was the one that approached Gettysburg to add Pay by Phone as a mobile payment solution. So, interestingly enough, I've been working with the borough since the very beginning of building our relationship from start to taking care of you as an existing client. So, pretty fun to be here today and presenting to you about a new solution we have available that I think is going to be of interest to the borough, and something that I feel like, because this, when I visit this area, the feeling that I get is that you really take care of your local merchants, and there is a very deep relationship with your local businesses, and parking plays a part into that. And so, that's what the coupons is about, and I'm going to talk more about that in a minute. But before I do, I wanted to do some quick introductions, so I am...
Would you mind pulling your microphone a little closer?
Yeah. Is that better?
Yeah.
I have such a loud voice, sometimes I don't even need a microphone, but yours, this is probably recorded.
It's for the benefit of the folks watching at home as well.
Yeah. So, I am from southeast Ohio, about five hours southwest of here. I drove in this morning and got here about 1:30 today, and I think the borough is such a charming and historic area. I really enjoy visiting when I get to come in. But coming from southeast Ohio, you can see here some of the photos of some of the work that I've done with the borough. You can see that is actually me on a ladder in that upper right-hand corner, putting the decals on the beams in the Racehorse Alley garage. That's also me doing some decals on the meters. But a more fun photo is my two fur babies there at the bottom. That's Petey and Loki, and Loki is 13 weeks old, so he's a new boy. And I have three kids, but they're grown adults, so they didn't make the slide. So, here's the agenda, a couple of the things that I'm going to cover today, and we'll actually move through these pretty quickly, so I won't take up too much of your time. I'll give you a little bit of a background about what coupons are, what they're going to accomplish, and what we're proposing for the borough, and then some use case discussions to give you an idea of who would use these, how they benefit each group, what the revenue flow means, what that means for the borough, and how that impacts your parkers and other people, and then the coupon experience in general, and then, of course, some questions if you have any. So, I have a video here. Charles, you might have to hit play for this one, just going to let you listen.
We're excited to introduce a new feature. Parking Coupons. Businesses can market directly to nearby parkers by offering parking coupons right in the Pay by Phone. Parking coupons can be created in three easy steps to effortlessly increase foot traffic to local businesses. Create a coupon. Add a balance. Display your coupon. Parkers simply scan a coupon, and the discount is immediately applied to their active parking session. The best part, cities and parking operators can activate parking coupons with a click of a button. Visit paybyphone.com to learn more.
Thank you.
We're excited.
There we go. So, when we developed coupons, there's a few things that was part of the premise for why this was developed, and really it was, we were approached by several of our clients saying, we have local businesses that have a unique request where they want to provide parkers that are frequenting their business locations with a discount when they come in and purchase an item. So, think about a restaurant, or a pub, or even like an attorney's office that wants to compensate or validate parking for somebody that has paid for parking outside of their business establishment. And that's what coupons does. So, they start a session in the app the same as they would normally, and the coupon allows the business to cover the discount for the parker. So, that was the premise of it, that was the problem to solve. It also, I have some bullet points here, and I'm not going to cover all of these, but the most important ones that we heard was, we need a pathway that connects parking and local businesses, understanding that businesses need to bring people in to be successful, and a lot of times, parking spaces right outside of their business can either be frequented by someone that's parking that's not in their business. Now, this doesn't mean that the coupon's going to mean that they're always parked right in front of the building, but also the ability to advertise their business in the app. So, when somebody pays for parking, they have the ability to see what businesses might be offering coupons. The other is, of course, allowing those merchants to self-manage the ability to pay for a portion of that customer's parking session. So, a few of the use cases is municipalities, of course. I would consider the borough within this grouping, you're a municipal operation. But when you think about a university environment, a university is still connected to an adjacent municipality, so it's the same exact concept. And a lot of times, a university environment can operate like a mini-city within a city, and the local businesses are still being supported by those that are frequenting, going to the university environments. Maybe, they might have multiple bookstores on campus, or coffee shops, or a variety of businesses that are unique to that university environment. So, it's in interest to the university, it's of interest to the city. Parking operators would be private parking lots, so if somebody owns maybe a 20-space lot, that's considered a private parking operator. Same factor for them. They're driving business to your local businesses as well by offering a parking commodity. And then you think about your merchants associations, your Chamber of Commerce, their primary goal is to support your local businesses. So, we partner with those groups to be able to offer these coupon solutions, which kind of brings all of that back together in a circular flow. And then, of course, your parkers everywhere who are benefiting from this. So, I put this slide together to show you an example of not just when I talked about having the ability to show that a business is offering coupons in the app, but also as somebody's strolling down the street here in Gettysburg, they would have the ability to see a decal in the window that says, parking coupons accepted here. So, when somebody's walking down the street, they know they paid with Pay by Phone, and they see that decal in the window, that's an incentive to come in, to shop in their location, and to make a purchase, to get that 50 cent discount, or get a dollar off of parking based on whatever the merchant has selected, which is the beauty of it, because the merchant is choosing that. So, the revenue flow really doesn't change from what it currently is. Pay by Phone for the borough is merchant of record, and that just means that the merchant themselves goes in, they set up their account, they go in, they add their balance to be able to provide the coupons. The parker goes in and pays for parking, all in the same way that they currently would now, and all of that revenue still flows into that merchant account that's currently established. And then, when the month is closed out, all of the revenue is moved over to the borough, the same as we normally would. So, that part really doesn't change at all. The only thing that is changing is, in order for coupons to be valid, we have to move the operation to what's called a post-pay environment. So, a prepay environment is when somebody pays for a transaction in the Pay by Phone app, the minute it is complete or transacted, that is a prepay. It is authorized and placed that $4, or whatever the fee is, on the card in that moment. Instead, if they bought two hours' worth of parking, we wouldn't charge that balance until the two hours had expired, so that's called a post-pay. And that's just so if they do get a coupon during their session, it can be applied. So, this is just a brief overview of the experience, and we're going to start with the merchant. It really is as simple as going to the Pay by Phone website, setting up your merchant account, and clicking Add Balance. And in the second screenshot, you can see, in this example, they've added $100. So, adding $100 gives them the ability to give... give out coupons. How many coupons would depend on what they want to set that as. Are they giving a quarter discount? Are they giving 50 cents? So that would go against their balance. From the parker's perspective, on the left-hand side of the screen, you can see that this is a session where they've started the session. You can see "Extend" is an option, so right underneath the "Extend" option is an "Apply Coupon" option. And when you click that, then you can see what's on the right side. If you were with the merchant then, you could scan the code. But you can also see that you can see all of the businesses. It uses geofence technology, so it knows where they're standing, and it's going to say, "These are all the businesses in the area where you're currently at that offer discounts for parking." And then if they are talking to that merchant, and they say, "Hey, I paid with Pay by Phone. Can I get a discount?" And they say, "Oh, yeah," and they get on their device, they pull up their QR code, and they scan it within the app. The QR code does circulate every, I think it is 28 seconds. Yeah, that shows 28 seconds. So it changes. So I couldn't screenshot that and send it to my friend and say, "Hey, use this and get you a discount on parking," because it constantly changes. And you can see in the middle one, it shows an example of a coupon being applied. So the session was $2. It gave a dollar coupon, so the new total is a dollar. And in the very last one, you can see "Apply Coupon" is grayed out, because they've got their coupon already, and they can only get one. And that's it. Any questions?
I have questions, sorry. So on the coupons from the businesses, is that something that can only be utilized that day, or can the patron build up coupons like a credit, like I do at some of our local coffee shops with my points type of thing?
That's a great question. It is not like points in that you can accumulate them, so it is in the moment during your active session. So coupon can only be applied to an active session. So if I go in and I say to Bob's Burgers, "I'm here. I bought lunch. Can I get a discount on my parking?" I would need to scan that coupon in that moment while my session was active.
And am I only allowed one coupon per session?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. So if you're going into a retail store or a restaurant, the QR codes posted by the cash register, would it be expected, I would assume, that the patron's buying something and not just going in trying to scan the coupon?
Correct.
Because of purchasing, not just going in and getting a free discount?
Exactly. And it's all about the marketing materials. If on that decal, they want to say, you know, "Purchase required," or however they want to list that. And then the QR code is on an electronic device, so it's not just like a picture shown. They have to pull it up, because it changes.
Sorry, one more. But if I were to be in a parking session and use it at one retail store, but then I, and it uses that coupon after my purchase, but then I needed to extend my parking, does that extension start another session that I can then use it at a restaurant coupon as well?
That is a great question. I don't think anybody has--
I'm just thinking about longevity of the person that is parking. We want them here. We want them spending money. We want them extending their parking and visiting our businesses.
I will get the answer for that. I think the answer is yes, but I want to confirm that.
Thank you.
Becca, do you have any thoughts as to how this would impact your operation?
I do not, I mean, I think it's a great thing to have, and it shouldn't impact us at all, because other than, you know, more people may use it, but it shouldn't impact us negatively or anything. It would only be positive. It's not costing us anything. It's the merchants that are paying the discount. So I think it would be a great idea.
Has anyone spoken to the merchants in town about this coupon use? Have you done like a focused group or anything?
I have not. This is the first. We have brought this to The Borough, and I'm happy to speak with your merchant association, your Chamber of Commerce, and have conversations with them. It is my goal for The Borough to be one of the first to bring coupons to this area, so I would love to have that conversation with them.
What other communities in South Central Pennsylvania that offers the coupons?
We just launched this product.
So this is really--
This is very new.
Okay. Thanks.
So I want to do something a little unorthodox. We have some local business people here in the audience. I'm just going to do a show of hands here. Is this something you think you would use? Is this something you think you would not be interested in? Well, the good news is, if we were to adopt it, nobody would be compelled to use it, right? I was wondering, Jill, are you there? Yeah. Jill, would you mind reaching out to some folks and seeing if there's any interest in pursuing a program like this?
I have cards, so if anybody wants to see me after, I'm going to stick around. When it's over, you can get my card.
Great. And does Becca have a copy of the presentation that she could shop out if she needed to?
She does.
Great.
Yep.
Thank you for your time today. Oh, I'm sorry.
That'd be wonderful. And if you could have that conversation with Jill when you're
done, that would be really helpful. Thank you. Was there anything else on that? All right. That takes us to the Gettysburg Gateway Connectivity Project.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm going to start this conversation. So I'll go first, then Chad Clay, I'll be the engineer, and then Charles will wrap this presentation up. And I'm starting off, I want to go a little time travel here. So the Baltimore Street project started over 10 years ago. So 2014 to 2016 or better, started off with community efforts to start talking about what our downtown looks like, and how we're reinvesting in sidewalks, lighting, safety, and our businesses along this particular route that, of course, we know as Lincoln's footsteps. So that's from the train station all the way to the Soldier's National Cemetery, which is the path that Lincoln took, of course, to deliver the Gettysburg Address. So here we are, 10-plus years later, because this is how fast things work in this world, and we're here to tell you the progress that has been made and the decisions that are ahead. So I have a copy of the master plan here. It's been on the Borough website for seven years. It's 127 pages of riveting reading. If you need a copy, you can go to The Borough's website. But so we're going to go through, here's the agenda. So I'm going to go through the master plan, and then I'll, and then we'll pass this along. So the master plan was an effort by over 80 individuals in this community. It predates me. This was a research project for me in a lot of ways. I've certainly been very close to the Baltimore Street project over the last four years that I've been here. But this was going back to figure out who had their hands on this and how this got developed. So first, I want to talk about what the project is. So if you go to the master plan, the project is Baltimore Street corridor from the Borough limits at the cemetery, north into Lincoln Square, continues north one block onto Carlisle Street, coming to an end at the Lincoln Train Station and the Bus Transfer Center. So that is the master plan. That was what the stakeholders decided was the boundaries of this project. The vision for it was a couple of things. One was really, and reading from the bottom of the vision, is to draw residents, businesses, and visitors to downtown. And it was also to create gateways into The Borough, to basically create an identity to, of a sense of arrival when you got to Gettysburg, historic Gettysburg. So the mission of that was to improve the economy, create jobs, showcase our history, and really just bring up the quality of life for our businesses, residents, and visitors. So that goes back, you'll note the dates in the bottom corner, so 2017-18. So February of 2018, almost seven years ago, is when this master plan came together. So looking back, you may recognize some of the faces around this table and that's still in the center of the room. So the purpose of the master plan was to engage the community, which it did. Like I said, over 80 people were involved in laying out that map of Baltimore Street that you see on their table there, that, how that went from a visionary to a sketch plan, which is on the table there. And then those sketch plans were asked to go from there to renderings, and then the renderings and so forth would go to the design plan. So the design phase was something at that time that was, you know, envisioned and hoped for, but certainly not funded at this time. So the goal was to, and it still is, is applying for funding. So we'll get into that a little bit later. But as you see, the master plan laid out for providing sketches to regulatory authorities, meaning all the different entities that have things to do with, from The Borough to PennDOT and so forth, that would be part of this discussion. And we'll get into stakeholders here in a minute. Informing property owners, businesses, stakeholders on design concepts. And finally, providing enough information to every, to be able to seek funding. So we would have enough of a definition of this project area to say that we could start applying for grants to move forward. So problems to be addressed. These come straight out of the master plan. The sidewalks are broken and narrow. It detracts from our historical significance and our architecture. ADA compliance issues, as we just talked about sidewalks. The on-street parking is underutilized. Challenges for businesses to thrive. Overwhelming amount of large commercial truck traffic continues to be a problem. Noise pollution, unsafe crossing situations, high-speed vehicle traffic, and the awkward offset at South Street near LaFever Street. So that was the defined problem. So as we look at the goals that it came out of the master plan, the first one is revitalize parking and create regional collective parking. I found that very interesting, that one of, you know, the issues was not to create parking, but it was to revitalize it and make sure that we're thinking about how we are best using our land as an asset downtown. Street lighting for safety, sidewalks and crosswalks and ADA compliance, landscaping and street trees, which, of course, is related to sidewalks. Storm drainage and stormwater management. Traffic calming, curb bump outs. Creating an entrance gateway. This goes back to the idea of, you know, how do people know when they're coming in on Baltimore Street, coming into town? How do they know when they have arrived in The Borough? I mean, we know that they can see the historic battlefield as they come in, and the National Park Service, and the Museum and Visitor Center, but how do they know when they reach the Borough limit? The traffic signal at LaFever and South Streets was specifically identified in the master plan. Facilities for bicycle traffic goes into all sorts. Again, President Lincoln and the Gettysburg Address, how do we incorporate our history into this pathway, so that it tells a story of our importance of this corridor? Again, historic interpretation and storytelling. Barricades. Barricades came up very interestingly in the master plan. And as we've talked about events and event safety, and as we have seen tragic events around the country, I find this to be very visionary 10 years ago, that we were talking about this kind of safety structure and how it needed to be looked at. Public transit. Public transit is a big part of the Baltimore Street program with Rabbit Transit and PennDOT. Consideration of a public restroom was listed, and as you see there, the future Gettysburg Welcome Center is becoming a priority and going to be coming to fruition. Events, event structure again, and safety, and partnership opportunities. These were all the goals that were identified in the master plan back in 2018. And I can see that partnership opportunities have clearly developed out of this master plan. So stakeholders. These stakeholders that are listed were the ones that invested in this master plan. They were the sponsors that stepped up and said that this needs to be looked at, and it's worth looking at. So these, at the time, were who helped make this master plan come together, to hold the meetings, have the vision, and work with the contractors that pulled this all together. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chad, and he's going to talk to you about the current phases of the project and where we're going.
So unlike Jill, I have been here since the very beginning of this. Just shows you how long I've been here. But so I was one of the authors of the master plan, so I know it quite well. I'm going to try to, I have a tendency of getting into the weeds. I'm going to try to keep my presentation here at high level, because our intent here is not to revisit all of the things that we've kind of already decided in the master plan. I'm going to show you some things that we want to change out of the master plan. I'm going to highlight our focus on that. But again, I don't want to focus on all the details here. So first, I want to talk to you a little bit about the phases, and just remind you that this project was initially broken into three phases, and it will continue to be spoke about in those three phases. There was a couple of reasons for that. One was, we were building off of the momentum of Steinware, which had a $2,000 to $4,000, two different phases there. There were $2,000 to $4,000. So we were looking at an eight-to-10 million, I'm sorry, $2,000 to $4,000 million project. We were looking at an eight-to-10 million project here, and we were looking at, how can we do this in bite-sized pieces? So we decided that three phases would be the appropriate number of phases. That was one of the reasons. Second reason is the logistics. There's a high point between the Phase 1 and Phase 2. That's where the utilities break, so that kind of makes sense for that reason. And then, the third reason is, the stakeholders, they were discussing what should be the priority, what should be the secondary priority. Of course, the folks near the square were thinking that that should be the priority. The folks out by the cemetery were thinking that should be the priority. What everybody pretty much unanimously decided on is that the center of this project would be Phase 1. That's building off of the momentum of Steinware. And then what we decided to do was make the other two phases, 2A and 2B, instead of Phase 2 and 3. I'm going to come back to this in the next slide, but one of the things I wanted to point out is that Phase 2B is where the National Park Service Cemetery is. So part of this, the goal is to connect to the National Park Service. And whenever we got some funding for design, which I'm going to talk about, they would only fund Phase 1 and 2B, because that's where it's next to the National Military Park. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the completed tasks. I'm not going to go back all as far as what Jill just did, but I'm going to talk to you about some of the more recent completed tasks. I'm going to talk to you about where we are today, and then I'm going to talk to you about what are the next steps in the upcoming slides. So first, some of the more recent completed tasks. We did secure a Federal Lands Access Program grant for $800,000 to help towards the design. That's design-only funding. Again, the federal lands here is the National Military Park, and I just mentioned that it's funding Phases 1 and 2B, the design of Phase 1 and 2B. So the Phase 2A would be a combination of those other funds that are listed there. Some of it's from PennDOT, and what is called the Susquehanna Regional Transit Authority is what we know as Rabbit Transit. They have worked with the multimodal section of PennDOT to provide a match to that grant, as well as the Borough Council commitment that's been riding on your agenda or your budget for a couple of years now, that $313,000 from The Borough. I wanted, this is a little side note, there's an italics at the bottom. One of the things that I'm going to talk to you about for a significant scope change is the addition of Gettysburg Municipal Authority Sewer and Water. The funding for the design of that isn't necessarily determined. Talking to Mark Geis, if we were able to get construction money to do this, he feels that Gettysburg Municipal Authority would help towards the funding of that design if we can't fit that within his budget. But that hasn't been determined yet, so that's something that we'll have to reengage here within the next couple of months. Also completed tasks are some of the grant applications. Now, I don't want to mislead, we do not have any construction funding yet. These are funding grant applications. We've already submitted four grant applications for what was known as RACE until this morning, and now it's back to BUILD. And I can't remember that acronym off the top of my And I can't remember that acronym off the top of my head, but RACE was rebuilding American infrastructure with sustainability and equity. Just today, they changed it back to BUILD, B U I L D. And it was the Tiger Program before. But what we learned about this program is this program funds significantly sized projects, like in the twenty million dollar range. That made us think that, hey, let's try to do the entire project. There's an efficiency by doing everything at once. There's also logistics and continuity of having two projects built at the same time so that they don't look, they look like each other. It's a lot of pain at one time, but it's all done at one time and not stretched over ten years. You add a significant cost if you break this into different phases. So we're looking at these big grant funding opportunities like the RACE, the BUILD grant opportunity to potentially fund the entire project at once. That's the goal here. In two thousand twenty-five, we'll be submitting our fifth round of applications through the end of this month. We've been working with Michael Baker International, as you know, diligently over the past couple of weeks to put together that application, which, as you know, isn't an easy application to put together. It takes a significant amount of time. There's a lot of homework that goes into that application with benefit cost analysis and all kinds of things. So we are putting our best foot forward with that. We're also, because we have been declined four years in a row with RACE or what's now BUILD, we're starting to consider some potentially other sources. So we have a grant now for SS four A, it's Safe Streets for All. That's through PennDOT to potentially have funding towards this project. They require, that program requires first a planting, a planning grant to be completed. We just started with that. We have the contract pretty much underway and we'll be starting that within the next couple of months here. But we have to complete the planning part of that first. And that's going to look at borough-wide, not just Baltimore Street. But should we fail again at RACE, that would be a potential source to fund construction. So currently, we are in the scoping phase. As I said, we are engaged in the design at this point. Everything's going through PennDOT and they require the first part of their design to be the scoping phase. The bold bullets on this slide are directly from the master plan. Just like Jill just pointed out to you, these same things are going to be kind of a little bit redundant as we go through here. But the first one is providing the guidance to the engineer. So again, we have to further define the scope during this scoping phase. We have to determine some environmental and historical study levels. We have to do the sketch plan and renderings. Again, whenever Charles gets to his point, he's going to get into the weeds of some of those things. And we have engaged with some regulatory authorities. Again, the most notable one there is PennDOT. Everything has to get approved by PennDOT with this project. All of the funds that are being used for design are being administered through PennDOT. And I see Chris here in the audience. We've met with Chris a couple of times from the National Park Service. Obviously, they're an important player here and we want to make sure that our design is going to marry up with their wishes as well. And then the last two is about community engagement and property owners. Those are kind of two different things. We will without a doubt be talking to almost every property owner along this corridor. We're going to need to get temporary construction easements from them. And we're going to have discussions with how their porch stoops are going to tie into the design. But aside from that, the greater community is one of the things that we're going to be looking to the council for some direction on. Our last slide here is open it to you guys for some questions and providing some direction. And I wanted to come back to that community engagement when we get to that point. Some of the scope updates. So again, I'm not going to dwell on all of the things out of the master plan, but there are three big things over the past five, six years that have come up, that have added to the scope of this project. And they are the sewer and water, the stormwater culvert, that's the Weinbrenner Culvert under the Welcome Center and the square. So first, the picture on the left is just a picture of a water valve. That's actually on North Washington Street, the project we're currently under construction with. But the point of that picture there is to describe the fact that if you have to replace utilities, it does a significant amount of damage to a street, to a streetscape. It makes more sense to have all of the sewer and water on that street replaced before we do all of these nice amenities. It's a quoted price tag. It's three point seven million dollars to replace all of the sewer and water. And that's part of the reason why it wasn't initially included in the master plan. But as we've moved forward with the discussions on this project and have determined that there are potential funding sources for these kind of things, we've decided that it is a lot of merit in including that into the application. So that's one of the things that we would like to get direction from you on if we should continue down this path with this increased scope. That's probably the biggest ticket item in terms of dollar amount. And I did get an indication from Mark Geis with Gettysburg Municipal Authority that there's, of course, there's a match to the grant application and that GMA would pick up the match for that portion of this application if we would include it with the grant application. The second one is the Weinbrenner Culvert. There's some pictures here. This is the new Welcome Center. And so we didn't know about this culvert pipe whenever we were doing the initial master plan. When we started designing the welcome center, we found this culvert pipe. Mr. G's Ice Creams right here, it used to be the Weinbrenner Farm. And that's why they called this the Weinbrenner Run. And then they built this underground culvert pipe. Our engineers have crawled through this pipe. There's a picture later in Charles' slide that shows you just how badly, the condition that that pipe's in. It's actively failing as we speak. So we have had to be really careful with the Welcome Center design so that we're not building anything on it. The bottom line is that needs to be replaced. And it would be remiss if we did not replace that as part of this project. And then lastly, the square, the image I have here is just empty, as you can see. Charles is going to get back into that a little bit more with his slide. I did want to mention that the grant application that we submitted for the last two times, as I said, there was four grant applications. The last two did include more improvements in the square. I did come to the council a little over two years ago to make sure that you were okay with including that scope into the grant application at the time. And pretty much the direction at that point was unanimous that they did want to include some money for the square as well. So next steps are to go onto the design phase. We're looking to finish up the scoping probably next month. They conclude that with what they call a scoping field view, where there'll be all these folks with PennDOT, with the PennDOT hats and the yellow vests, walking down Baltimore Street. You probably see us in about a month from now doing that. At that point, that'll lead us right into the design. We have to complete the survey. There's going to be a lot of environmental historic reviews. Obviously, we're in a historic town here. They have two different stages then of the designs, preliminary design, where we start including all those community, the community and the property owners. And then we go into the final design. That process is at least two years, maybe three years at worst case scenario. I'm hoping it's closer to two years. But it's not a quick process and there will be a lot of time that you guys will have with me back and forth to get into the weeds of the project. And then obviously, the constructions, the next step. At best case scenario, we'd have this thing constructed by the year twenty twenty-nine. It'll probably end up being closer to twenty thirty. I just want to have a realistic expectation and kind of paint the picture that what we're talking to you about now is really early stages here. There's still going to be a lot of discussions as we move forward. So with that, I will pass it to Charles.
Thank you, Jill and Chad. I did want to, Jill mentioned about the partnerships. And so Chris Heister, Gettysburg National Military Park Superintendent is with us tonight. And I wanted to publicly thank the Park Service for advocating for the FLAP grant because without your endorsement, we would not be where we are today. That was a significant step and added a lot of momentum to this very audacious plan that this community embarked on over ten years ago. If you remember the slide, this is the Long, 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 Long Dinner Party from October of two thousand nineteen. It's an image that really speaks to the collaboration and excitement that this community put together in an effort to advance this very big plan. This was specifically a fundraiser for the Baltimore Street Connectivity Project, which also then helped support the local match to the FLAP grant that we got from the federal government. I'm going to talk a little bit about our current infrastructure. Chad alluded a lot to that. Safety considerations, design considerations. We have some back-of-the-napkin-type sketch plans just to kind of get the creative juices flowing. And then I want to talk about future investments a little bit. Before I get into the slides, this is an opportunity for everyone just to step back and hopefully everyone can open their minds to creative juices. That we, what we're doing now frankly is not for us. What we are doing is building a Gettysburg for the next generation and the generation that follows them. Frankly, many of us may never actually enjoy what we're envisioning here because it's already been ten years and we're not at construction yet. So frankly, I'll probably be in retirement by the time we break ground on this. And that's twelve years away yet. So hopefully it comes before that. But you can see it took us ten years to get to where we are today. These things are deliberately slow, methodical, and it just takes time. So again, this is not for us, it's for our next generation. And so I hope everyone can open their minds to thinking big and out of the box when we talk about some of these design considerations. Chad alluded to this, some of the current infrastructure, it is bad. We all are very well aware of the dangerous sidewalks, whether that was sidewalk upheavals from tree roots or just age and disrepair. We all know that it puts the borough at a disadvantage from a liability standpoint because whenever someone falls because of a non-ADA compliant sidewalk, we have found ourselves in litigation and never a good place to be. So we do need to address that. We spoke a little bit about that earlier tonight with the sidewalk ordinance. If you remember these images, we have a speeding problem on Baltimore Street. The first picture here in the top left resulted from a speeding accident, March first of two thousand twenty-one, where a motorist came into town from the south, heading north on Baltimore Street, and did not successfully navigate the slight curve, crashing into a pillar, ultimately crashing into two structures there, igniting a very large fire. The motorist unfortunately lost his life. Fortunately, the residents in that building did not lose their life, but they were displaced for a considerable amount of time as both those buildings were uninhabitable and one had to be completely demolished the same day as the accident because it was that, it was that bad. The image on the bottom actually happened, I think, three years ago. A motorist failed to navigate the circle and went right through the circle, really tore up the nice flowers that the garden club gives us every year. This motorist did not die. It was my understanding, a crew member at Blue and Gray actually came out and extricated them before emergency vehicles could get on site. Just keep this image in the back of your mind when we're talking about barricades. When we are talking about redesigning of the square, there's some important safety features that I think as a community we should discuss. This is the picture of the failing culvert that kind of bisects Baltimore Street. This is underground. This is an image that the engineers at CS Davidson took for us. You can see literally the stones from the sides are collapsing. And Chad, you know, he's the engineer. I will trust his judgment that this is actively failing. And this picture, it's not, doesn't look like it would hold up much, much longer. They are so uncertain of its integrity that we purposely cannot put parking on the Gettysburg Welcome Center site just yet because parking would be sitting on top of this location and we certainly don't want to add any extra weight, you know, just so that we can hopefully prolong this until we find the construction dollars to fix it. Other considerations specific to the square. Obviously, this is an aerial photo of the traffic in the square. It is, especially during our peak season, can be a challenge to get through the square in a timely manner. We all love trucks. I say that in jest. We do not. Obviously, we have a need for them. We're not going to get rid of them. Lincoln Highway is part of the national roadway system. The talk of the bypass is gone. That ship has sailed decades ago. Once in a while, the topic always comes up about a bypass. Don't see that happening, to be perfectly honest. The town missed that opportunity back in the eighties when it was a proposal then. So we're stuck with trucks. So the best thing we can do is to find ways to mitigate the impact of truck traffic in and through the borough. Lincoln Square is frankly unsafe from a motor vehicle perspective. We all have parked there at some point and kind of just gambled, hope we could back out into oncoming traffic and navigate that safely. It's particularly harrowing when you're doing that at night and it's raining. I've done that many times. It's a very uncomfortable feeling. I think we can all relate to that. Again, here's another example of some other trucks as relates to deliveries. Other trucks, we have a need to figure out the large vehicle issue. And I know that we've had the discussion on bus parking a couple of months ago. But this is an extension of that. We do have the need for deliveries, whether that's picking up our refuse, whether that's delivering our goods to our local restaurateurs or pubs, delivering food, or even if you're doing something with a cleaning company sometimes. Buses, again. The Borough Council authorized a carve-out for bus parking. I do think there are other things we can consider when it comes to these oversized vehicles, whether that's a mutually shared drop-off location somewhere in this vicinity that could be shared between buses and delivery trucks, for example. Even though the law allows a bus to stop in the travel lane to unload pedestrians, it's not a desirable situation to have because then you have the vehicles that are behind the bus trying to sneak around into oncoming traffic. And you just don't know how long the bus is going to be in that location inhibiting the flow of traffic. So there are some more considerations to be had there as well. Pedestrians. Fortunately for Gettysburg, in my opinion, we treat pedestrians much differently than we, than most other municipalities or cities, especially in and around Lincoln Square, where a pedestrian will just start walking out into the street and then the vehicle will actually stop and kindly let that person continue unimpeded. The first one here is, you can see a pedestrian right there in that circle. They managed to get into that crosswalk behind this car, but in front of that car. And just a fun little fact that if you do, if you are in the situation where you find a pedestrian and there's a car behind you, the car behind that legally cannot go around this car to continue. You must give all deference to the pedestrian in the crosswalk at that point. This is also kind of interesting to me because now we have our self-guided people who just kind of walk out and put up the hand and say, you know, I'm going, you need to stop. We just need to make sure that whatever we design for our pedestrians and vehicles works for the safety of everyone. Continuing down the logic of people. It's my view that really the square is the people gathering place. It was really built originally as a town gathering center. In fact, the old historic courthouse used to be right in the middle of Lincoln Square, if you weren't aware of that, right where the flagpole is now. And back in the day, courthouses were where people would come for town hall meetings and things of that sort. So that has actually increased and continued, but has actually increased specifically during and after the pandemic. If you remember, we created the parklet program on Lincoln Square and a couple of other places. The one that stuck was on Lincoln Square only because of its popularity and use. We have a lot of First Amendment-type interactions, if you will. They often request use of all four quadrants of the square, including the parklet. We have big events now. This is a great problem to have. We have the great success of the Christmas Festival, for example, produced by Main Street Gettysburg, plug for that. And do you know how many days it is till the next Christmas festival? Three hundred and some? Three twenty-seven? Yeah, I think you're about right. 327? Yeah, I think you're about right. When we are looking at the tragedies that happened in Wisconsin a few Christmases ago and just a a couple of weeks ago in New Orleans, Gettysburg was really ahead of the curve on this, on on hardening our streetscapes during these big gathering events. Whenever we are looking at a redesign and conceptualizing what we're building for tomorrow and the years to come, we need to have that at the top of mind so that we we harden our infrastructure so that it makes it a little easier for us to produce these large scale events without the labor intensive effort that goes into with our Public Works Department by physically manhandling 1,000 pound Jersey barriers across intersections, things like that. And there's any number of different ideas we we could discuss that that might serve that purpose. Some design considerations, the this slide is really built off of the success on Steinware Avenue. Really, the Baltimore Street Project, the Connectivity Project, is an extension of the success of Steinware Avenue that the Business Improvement District, to their credit, they they created a bid and helped finance these types of things. So we have the decorative benches. We have the heritage lighting. And obviously, the the middle of Baltimore Street, it's not very nice to walk down at night. There literally is no 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 lights. And then on top of that, you have uneven sidewalks. It's quite an experience. We do have to recycle. Obviously, we want to take care of our waste, but to the extent that we can also continuing our recycling program to the public space, we should consider ways to do that. Steinware Avenue Incorporated Bus Shelters. There are six bus locations, I believe, in the master plan. Six, maybe seven, depending on spacing and things of that sort. So this is why we have a partner in Rabbit Transit because we're going to help build their infrastructure as well to better service the folks that use Rabbit Transit. Permeable pavers, there's not an image here necessarily of permeable pavers, but we are an MS4 mandated community, meaning we need to manage our stormwater. Permeable pavement just means if we can find locations where we find brick or some type of surface that will allow stormwater to permeate through that and and filtrate back down into the ground, that will go a long way to helping us achieve our MS4 mandates. This image here talks to our multimodal efforts. This is a little bike path here with a shero. There are thoughts on increasing that and expand expanding our bicycle network through Gettysburg as well. There's been some thought too, and there's pros and cons to this, but there's been some thought to, is this an opportunity to remove on street parking meters and go to a more centralized parking kiosk? The advantages to that is, one, it's less labor intensive to maintain from a staffing perspective. But two, it'll help the streetscape in that it reduces on street clutter. We had a little conversation about that earlier tonight. And when you're removing parking parking meters, you'll have more space for people, pedestrians. Rain gardens and MS4 mandate, and there are some plans to incorporate rain gardens along the Baltimore Street corridor and barricades. We talked about that just a couple of minutes ago. The parking illusion, this is where I'd like people to really kind of step back and open their minds about parking as it relates to parking in what used to be a farmer's field and you're building strip malls, or you're trying to create a walkable community that focuses on human scale. And this is slight to you. How's that relate to our situation? Here's an aerial view of Lincoln Square. Gettysburg Hotel. Here is Gallery 30, Nerd Herd, One Lincoln, and Racehorse Alley Parking Garage. This is taken from 1,367 feet in the air. Our neighbor out west or to the east, Walmart, same elevation, 1,367 feet. It's the footprint of Walmart and all their expansive, empty parking space. So I just put a perimeter, a yellow perimeter around Walmart. And most of Walmart's parking is in that block, that rectangle there. And that's about the that it squares about the geographic center of Walmart. What happens when we overlay Lincoln Square to this same footprint? This is Racehorse Alley Garage where everyone tends to, most people tend to park at Walmart. This is Walmart. The Gettysburg Hotel fits right in the middle of of the square footage of Walmart. It's actually shorter to walk from Racehorse Alley Garage to the flagpole than it is to walk from a parking lot at Walmart to the electronics center inside Walmart. So I'm going to push back because people always tell me there's a parking problem in Gettysburg. We do not have a parking problem in Gettysburg. The reason is the expectations that were in that video and this very underutilized parking structure that we have. Now, I get it. People might not know where it is. We can work on signage to figure that out. Generally speaking, the parking spaces on Baltimore Street, it was alluded to earlier with Jill's presentation. There may be four times a year that Baltimore Street is parked full. The rest of the year, it's it's seriously underutilized. So this is just a really interesting diagram and case study in in parking expectations as it relates to people's expectations versus the reality here in town. So here we go. There's a couple sketch diagrams here and there's this is not a final rendering by any means. Literally, these are kind of the back of the napkin sketch drawings. The the formal name of this project is the Gettysburg Gateway Connectivity Project. The word gateway is literally in the title. Why is that? We want to create a sense of place so that when you're coming through the Park Service's land, which surrounds all of us, we are the donut hole. When when you get to Gettysburg, you're not quite sure if you're actually in the municipality. And so that's kind of the concept of creating a gateway. There's also safety considerations that can be developed with the gateway. And this sketch plan here shows traffic tables, similar to what we currently have installed on Broadway. As you know, this is the the path that the motorists came down at a very high rate of speed. I think the odometer was stuck at 93 miles an hour that morning. I remember that very well. And if you have to slow down because, one, the road becomes narrower, it creates a visualization that, oh, I better slow down because I have to navigate differently now. And then obviously, you're going to have a a speed hump which will slow you down. The idea here is to also create something a little further north, a safer spot for pedestrians to cross the street. The location of these, I I know Chris Heister was concerned about the placement. As, you know, is it at the crest of the hill? Is it to the south side of the crest, the north side of the crest? All of that is up for debate and honestly, we're going to have to lean on PennDOT to give us guidance on those types of decisions. On the top right, a a rendering of Lincoln Square. Do, how do we want to redesign Lincoln Square if if at all? There is obviously the popularity of the Parklet now. It's well attended, especially in the warm months when you have outdoor entertainment there. There's other shows. It's used for festivals and other types of events. When we have those types of events, the square is very congested. And I do think we're getting, and this is a great problem to have. It's like, we we want people downtown. We want people spending money in our businesses, but we have to make sure they have a fun, safe experience, an enjoyable experience when they're doing that. So do we need to find ways to create more people space and maybe a little less vehicle space? All up for discussion. These are renderings that are a little further along than the two on the right hand side. So this is the intersection at Breckenridge Street. You can see there's some safety pedestrian concepts here with the piano keys. There's a traffic beacon here, like on La Fever Street, you push the button, it it flashes bright yellow, alerting a motorist that a pedestrian is is attempting to cross the street. And so the hopefully the vehicle would would slow down. Same concept here at La Fever Street. I'm sorry, that was Breckenridge Street. La Fever Street here. This is going to be a signalized intersection. You can see the the traffic signal here, much like the the dog leg intersection up on Pears Ridge. Yes, thank you. Investment. None of this is cheap, and we've been saying that from the very beginning. And frankly, it's gotten even more expensive. But the alternative, what is the alternative? We need to find ways to keep Gettysburg current and moving forward. Fortunately, we had visionaries back in the 80s and early 90s that turned the burned out hotel into something that was a great success. How long did this, was it 10 years that was burned out? Nine years? It's a long time. Fortunately, we don't have that kind of catastrophe right now, but we all know what's there now compared to what could be. And so this is why I'm asking everyone just step back and open their minds and envision what could be for the next 50, 75 years in Gettysburg. Back when we started this, the estimated price was $7.8 million. Obviously, inflation has gone up significantly since then. Currently, if we just stuck with the ideas of what was happening in 2018, 2017, when this plan began, we'd be talking about, you know, a $12 million project. We have now since, as Chad was speaking about, added a lot of the utility work. So we have the failing culvert. We know there's a 100 year old sewer line, 100 year old water line under Baltimore Street that we really should tackle if we're going to tackle the the more pleasant amenities at the surface. So all that said and done, our new cost is $17.8 million. That includes what we have in the master plan. That includes the infrastructure for water sewer, some stormwater management, and also a more well thought through use of of Lincoln Square. So that explains why so much. Everything has been consolidated into one master plan now. So remember Chad spoke about the three phases. There are economies of scale to doing it all in one big project. And there are funding sources out there that will give you the 17 million if you have the the project that warrants the merit when the grant tours of those types of grants do the assessments. So I spoke all about these, the the cost benefit analysis, construction timeline that Spag Chad spoke to, economies of scale, safety considerations, our infrastructure requirements, and a strategic investment. And I just wanted to give the shout out to, and Jill spoke to this, our partners really have come through in some big ways. We're now partnering with the Gettysburg Municipal Authority for the water and sewer infrastructure. We're partnering with the Gettysburg Stormwater Authority to deal with our stormwater management. Of course, we have the partner in the National Park Service who continues to advocate for the funding. And one thing I'd just like to point out about the funding is, yes, Chad said, we we are now entering our fifth round of the RACE Grant. We are, I think, in a position, and I'm not putting expectations on it because we we it, we may not get it. But I think we are probably in the best position to get it this round, simply because it is our fifth time. We have new partners in Cozen and Connor, who is advocating for this project, both at the state level and at the federal level. Jill Sellers and Main Street have actively engaged our state and federal representatives who are aware of this project and are advocating for its success, as is the the Park Service. And I I don't want to speak for for Chris at the Park Service, but I I think at a meeting I had with her once, if if the federal government's spending $800,000 for a design, they're they're, they really want to see it get built. Otherwise, that would be money that was not used well. So you could say it much more eloquently than me on that. So that concludes my my piece to this. Now we're going to open it up to to Borough Council. Just want to remind everyone again, the the big picture view, we're designing the future for Gettysburg and we're doing it together. Everything's on the table, within reason, of course. And there is a a direction we're going to need from council as it relates to PennDOT. We are currently in design and engineering. Chad spoke about the scoping. And and I don't know if you want to come back in and talk a little bit more about what council needs to weigh in on, or do we just want to open it up for general questions right now?
Okay. I'll just, just as a quick reminder, so the first bullet there, the scoping phase with PennDOT, we're going to be having this scoping phase. And they're going to need, it's kind of like a chicken and an egg thing where who who makes the final decision on what the scope is? Of course, we have the partner with the National Park Service. They need to weigh in. The council needs to weigh in. PennDOT needs to weigh in. I I work for you guys. My contract is with with the borough. It's through PennDOT, through ECMS, but it's really for you guys first. So I can't go to PennDOT and say that this is what the borough wants unless I'm sure that that's what you guys want. So I think that's part of the scoping phase is is to just say, you know, did everything we just presented to you guys, if if you like it, if you like everything, that this is a super simple conversation. If there's something that you want us to tweak, we need to know that. So whenever I go to that scoping field with you with PennDOT, I can say, well, there was some pushback about this specific item. So we might end up withdrawing that, but just to let them let PennDOT aware of that. Again, this is really high level. This is just scoping. We're not getting the design now. But I just need to be able to indicate to them what the council wants as the owner of the project, so.
Chad, don't run away yet. I want to ask you a question. I think the last time we met with Michael Baker, we had specifically asked about limitations on reduction of the traffic areas in through in and around the circle. Have they been able to come back to us with any sort of measurements on those?
Yes, some really, really preliminary. Again, I don't want to suggest in any way that the the design is baked in at this point, but they have come back. So so first, let me let me say, because it's a great question. We are using the word traffic signal very or traffic circle very carefully when we when we move forward here. This is not a roundabout. We looked at the dimensions that it would take to create a a a more traditional roundabout, a a modern roundabout that you might have entered into where they have the pork chop at the beginning, where it separates the traffic. They take way more space. It just simply doesn't fit. It eliminates all of our parking and doesn't provide any more pedestrian space. So we've started taking looks at at those kind of things. If we go back to just a traffic circle and try to keep it as close to what exists as possible, that is actually the ideal design. So what we've kind of are are learning is that the traffic signal that you can, the traffic circle that you can see in the picture there is the optimal diameter for the traffic circle. It's it's beyond that is the things where we can be creative, whether we need parking space or not there. That's the the places where we can be creative. Did that answer your question, Matt?
What about, I, no, no. Specifically, can we reduce the amount of traffic, the lane width?
Oh, the lane width, you mean out further on Baltimore Street? Yes, absolutely.
No, no, I mean here on the square. So right now we have like two and a half to three lanes.
Yes, yeah, yeah, so.
Between the parking and the circular.
There is a significant lane reduction on the outside. So the the circle wouldn't change any. The circle would be the exact same dimension. It's the it's the outer. It's the outer portion of it that could be reduced pretty significantly. Yeah, go back to the. Maybe you can even go.
I was going to say if you want a laser.
I was thinking I can go back to, it's pretty back of the napkin. I don't know how far I've got to go. It's going to be easier to discuss here. So here's, again, a rendering. This circle is the exact same dimensions as the existing circle. The current curb is all the way back to here where the parking is. We're suggesting that you could bring it all the way into here if you eliminate those parking spaces and significantly reduce the amount of asphalt and increase the pedestrian space. So yeah, we've started looking at it, there definitely is room for improvement there with that regards.
Okay. So what I'd like to ask council to consider here are two questions. So this discussion around the redesign of the square, this goes back a couple of years. You know, the Muslim Library has a really lovely collection of photographs of the boroughs, the town square, over 200 years' time. They've got a photographic image that goes back to, I think, the 1830s or something. It shows the courthouse in the center of what at the time was called the Diamond. And it was very much, the square was very much designed for the conveyance of the time, which is horse and buggy, foot traffic, horseback riding. And then it gets redesigned over time. It's really a really impressive selection of historic photographs of the real estate as it changes. The last major redesign of the Borough Square was around the turn of the century, and it has to do with sort of updating towards a more automotively-oriented universe than what they had in the 19th century. And then the square was then again updated, but not radically redesigned in the latter half of the 20th century. So what we discussed two years ago was the idea that this is an evolving space, it is a public space, it is a public center, and that it exists for the people of Gettysburg and the people who visit Gettysburg. And we were sort of challenged to think of the design of it as a place that centers on human beings as opposed to the vehicles of 20 human beings. How could we maximize hundreds or thousands of people using this public space as opposed to what we do now, which is dedicating it to a relatively small number of vehicles to be stored temporarily? So that's why you're going to see some of these drawings have removed the parking on the square. So that's one topic of discussion here I'd like to hear from council members on. Do you continue to support what was agreed on two years ago? Or would this particular iteration of council like to see more automotive design elements preserved? And then the other thing I think we need to touch base on here tonight is whether we want to heed staff's recommendations to lump the Baltimore Street Sewer and Water Program in with the overall project. We have, over the last year, I think multiple times, sort of realized that over decades, many, many cans have been kicked down the road. And I think we have been ambitious in no longer wanting to be that type of council that continues to kick those cans. That's why we have opted to take responsibility for damage from trees, for damage to Tiber walls, for larger issues that we don't want to see come crashing down on any one property owner. So I'd like to hear from you whether we think it's wise to go ahead and deal with 100-year-old failing infrastructure now, or do we complete the Baltimore Street revitalization and then rip it all back up to replace the water and sewage at another time?
While you're thinking about that, real quick, and I forgot to mention this at the conclusion of my presentation, the idea here is, I said, everyone should step back, think big, all ideas are on the table. So staff would like to put together kind of a, for lack of a better way of saying, a town hall-type thing where we could have a bigger room, stations like during the rezoning effort, people can get up and walk around and put ideas on big whiteboards and interact with staff in different ways. So think about council, whether you'd like to do something like that, and we could probably make that happen sooner than later.
I think that'd be a wise course of action. So I just want to hear from council members on these two pressing issues here.
First of all, I do have two questions, but I agree, I think a town hall where we could open it up to a larger community would be really beneficial. We could all be there, and I think getting people's ideas on paper would be great. Two questions, a question that you had, Matt, about, you know, the square, Lincoln Square. Where does Michael Baker Associates come in with that? Have they weighed in on anything?
They've done some preliminary sketches at our direction.
And that's about it?
I mean, they're not here to advise one thing or another, they're here to draw what we ask them to.
Okay.
So I can offer a little bit more with that. So Michael Baker is directly engaged into the contract of the design. They'll be included in the entire design throughout the process for many different facets. They're a big company, so everything that CS Davidson can't provide at the local level, we need an electrical designer, they're going to be included with that. We're going to need environmental and historic screenings, they're going to do all of that. They're going to do the traffic planning or the traffic design for the new traffic signals at La Fever Street, those kind of big-ticket items that we need to pull in consultants for, they'll be providing those services. So, you know, the high level, they're going to be included in a lot of levels of this. With the scoping portion of this project, they have been engaged directly with putting together some renderings, coming up with some of the ideas, the meetings that we had with the National Park Service, they were at those meetings, we've had no less than four or five meetings so far. Again, we haven't finalized any designs, but they have been engaged in the process, and both their traffic engineers and their landscape architect has been included in those meetings.
Okay, thank you, thanks, Chad. The other question, I know this is a preliminary drawing up there in the upper right, but just because it's a little out of perspective, but are we seeing, with the reduction in parking there on the square, are we seeing the circle itself going around, which I know is not a roundabout? But is that, has that been reduced in terms of the width of it, the size of what it would be currently?
So the circle itself, where the flowers are in the center, is it identical?
No, I'm talking about the actual driving around.
The actual driving, yes.
That's been reduced.
That has been reduced.
So can someone address the whole issue of truck traffic then with this new design? What would this look like, how would this impact the community?
It'll absolutely, PennDOT won't allow us to design this and not accommodate the 53-footers. At this point, we have to accommodate the 53. So any design that we do will allow for the truck traffic.
But it would not be like a, kind of a subtle dissuasion for, like, dissuade?
Yeah, we're not going to go out of our way to invite or promote speedy trucks coming through the square, right? That's not the intent here. But we shall, not should, still design for trucks. PennDOT won't allow us to move forward with the project otherwise.
Okay.
And as a part of the interstate highway system or the national highway system, we have to allow for oversized vehicles as well. So when we see those trucks coming through on their way to, you know, military bases with tanks on the back, or modular homes, or, you know, storage tanks, whatever, we still have to allow for their passage as well.
Thank you.
Why is the bypass off the table?
Our state legislators back in the day said no. Pretty much that's it.
And people who were on council back then too, also, right? I mean, the people who were involved in local government back then voted against it back in the 60s, 70s.
It goes deeper into their reasoning, which I think was faulty reasoning, but at the end of the day, it's because there was actually a route, well-planned out, and now there's a high school there and developments, yeah.
So there's no way to revisit that if that's something we wanted to do?
So there's multiple iterations of the history on that. It has been tried, I believe, three separate times. The most recent time was in the early, late 80s to early 90s. And at that point, the state and the federal governments both were supporting, supportive of a bypass. Leases had been secured, there was properties that were identified where eminent domain would have to be done by either the state or federal governments. There was significant funding promised by the federal government to pay for what in today's dollars, I couldn't even begin to guess what it would cost. And ultimately, the project was scuttled by local businesspeople who didn't want to lose the automotive traffic in downtown Gettysburg. And that was true in all three major attempts to build a bypass.
One other question, as far as if you lose the spaces on the square, has there been a, to see how much revenue loss that would be annually?
So, again, this is not a done deal, but in theory, if you are extending, or if you're slightly narrowing the cartway, you could push current parking, which are about here, you could actually push parking for another space in each of these quads on each side of the road. So really, you would only be losing about half of your parking spaces. It would be what I would say is repurposed. So you're not going to lose 24 spaces on the square, you'd be losing about 12. As it relates to revenue loss, I don't think there is going to be a revenue loss. The only time we're going to lose revenue is when we are 100% parked, and we are far from being 100% parked in the borough. That was the argument for the parklet, against the parklet, it was a red herring.
I think, there are 32 spaces, right, on the square, not 24, right? Each quadrant has eight?
That's a Becca question.
Yeah, each quadrant has eight, each one also has an ADA space, and then the parklet does take up two and a half.
Okay, thank you.
In answer to Peter's question about the possibility of revisiting the northern bypass, the plan covered land areas that have now been developed, and so it cannot be followed directly any longer. When the hope for the bypass to the north went away, then developers moved in, and there just isn't the open space anymore. The initial plan, interestingly enough, my in-law's home out the Bigleyville Road was to be the visitor's center. And the field in front of that house, if you recall, as you go out Bigleyville Road, the house is set back further than most houses of that period. But the parking was to be in the front for visitors to go back there. The house itself, the barn, would be turned into a living museum of what farm life was like in those days. But it would be the visitor's center. And that open land around the house, they had to accommodate as bus parking because the tourist buses would come out there and needed someplace to park. So there were a lot of challenges for that northern bypass. But Kathy may remember, and what Charles mentioned, the downtown merchants were concerned that there would be a loss of business. And we don't know, that maybe was true. But another interesting wrinkle in that, back in those days when the northern bypass was being considered, trucks were smaller, they weren't 53 feet now. And so it was viewed, the problem was viewed a little bit differently than it is now. But any such projects in Gettysburg are full of excitement and full of discourse and confrontation. And that's what makes living in Gettysburg so much fun.
Yeah. That all being said, I do want to refocus on the two questions before us, the redesign of the square and the inclusion of the infrastructure in the overall plan. So I'd love to hear from folks down here.
I'd be reticent really to say what my direction would be with the square until we have community input. I'd like to know what the timetable is for especially businesses and property owners on the square. And I think we should have a lot of choices, alternatives, that we're presented with, that the community's presented with. Because it shouldn't be an all-or-nothing, it shouldn't be like no parking spaces. And then what we have now, we should have alternatives that are in between. I mean, I have a question about like just delivery trucks, you know, how are they going to service the businesses on the square? So I think we should have a community things as soon as possible.
I guess to speak to Matt's first question, with respect to the storm and sewer repairs and the redesign of Baltimore Street. You said that GMA and GSA were both partners in this and willing to cost-share in some of this to, yeah, to make that a little bit less of a burden. I would say that absolutely include the storm and sewer costs or the repairs as part of the project and not kick this can down the road. As far as the redesign of Lincoln Square, I sort of align with Chris in thinking that I need more information. I mean, that design is nice, and that looks ideal, but I would like to see if there's anything out there in other historic public squares that would be more of a visual for me, so I could understand what that looks like in real time.
Yeah, I think for the community input part to this, the engagement, there are many different towns that do many different things. Like Lancaster has only three quads accessible to vehicles, for example. So I personally don't like that because it involves a traffic signal. But yeah, this is very rudimentary, this is not a design. It's literally like the back of a napkin.
Building on what Alicia pointed out, we really have to consider in our thoughts on the square and any changes that we make, the historic nature of the square and what a square was historically. As Charles mentioned, the gathering place for the community. We can't just focus on the parking issues. We've got to also take into consideration the historic nature of what a square meant to a community. Patty, did you have anything more to?
Yeah, I was just thinking in terms of, I think this town meeting that we would have that would be open up to, you know, the broader community, would yield some good creative ideas. And I think we really need to hear from people before we make decisions, I think. But I also would want to keep in mind too, like just being creative in other ways too. I know there are other small communities that have, you know, historic downtowns that, you know, are dealing with truck traffic like we are and those challenges. But they also have like delivery times, so that delivery trucks come in at a certain time, you know, between 5:00 and 7:00, or 6:00 and 8:00 a.m., you know, and things like this that would kind of help to mitigate some of that traffic. So I think we need to be open to all kinds of ideas, like including that, so.
of ideas, like including that, so.
And let me just add some flavor to the discussion because this is exactly the type of feedback that we need. We aren't looking today for a decision that yes, we definitely want to do this. We're looking for, it's not a no. We need some more information so we can go to PennDOT just that. There were some questions about it, but this is something we might consider. We want to have a design, what engineers and planners call a design charade, where we'll go. And we started thinking about some designs with what are, what's going to happen with the, the delivery vehicles. We have, I'll just to give you a little, a flavor of what we're talking about, but each one of these little spaces like here, 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 and here are perfect spaces for, for pull-ups. That's what delivery trucks currently do. So if we designate it as that for charter buses or delivery trucks, that's something that we could consider with, with these designs. So we have started thinking about that and it's perfectly okay to say, I'm not ready to make a decision on this. It's not a no. It's just, we need to see more information.
I would also add, I think Matt's comment earlier about the Musselman Library at the college having a lot of photographs of what the square looked like over the history of the community. I'd be interested in seeing those, just I think from a historical standpoint and to see how the square, how Lincoln Square was used over the decades, so.
I will inquire with them as to whether we can get scans of those images.
Yeah, I agree that about the stormwater management and the water and sewer, that needs to be happening immediately. Not, that needs to be rolled into the whole for sure. I agree about that. Because that's been kicked down the road way too long. Yeah, I agree with my colleagues that yes, definitely a town hall is, is a great idea. I think that get, I don't think that it needs to be something that is all of a sudden, hey, here we're doing it. I think it needs to be planned out. I think people need a lot of notice and a lot of reminders, and hopefully they'll actually show up. But I do think that there are lots of different ideas that could, could happen with the square. The square has clearly been redesigned many times. This would not be the first time. But I love that idea about the buses and the delivery spots that could be literally for buses and delivery trucks for our businesses downtown that need, need that opportunity.
I'm just trying to get you back to your decision slide.
Put all that animation in there.
So from Main Street, Gettysburg's piece of this, I see we are the community engagement. We were the community engagement for the master plan, and this will be the next steps for, for the mass, for the master plan. Because we went back and reviewed that master plan to see how, you know, what territory that covered and, and the, and the funding sources that we're looking at that would cover this as a, as an entire project, to be able to include the square in the scoping phase is the question at hand. So that, that's the next question. Continued engagement, both with our partners and with community engagement as far as, as we're concerned to start to develop those public meetings so that we can start having those discussions so that there are choices to be had. There are ideas that are going to come from there. I think that we all have a lot to learn. I can tell you this, I told you before, this was a major, major research project for me as I looked back at what had been done prior to, to me arriving. But those are the decisions on the table so that it can move forward from the master plan that was created in 2018 so you can utilize the grant monies and the monies that you've invested so far to keep this moving forward. That's where you are.
All right. So is everybody agreeable to keeping the square within the scope?
I think it's important, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And again, nothing is decided. This is about the scope. No design is actually being voted on anytime soon. This will be a decade away.
Well, hopefully not.
You'll need a decision on design before a decade, but.
It's taken us 10 years to get to this today.
All right. Do you need anything else from us here tonight?
Oh, I need.
All right. Thank you all. That was a lot to think about. Thank you. That concludes our new business for the night. We will return to public comment. This section is not restricted to items on tonight's agenda. We do ask that you use the podium. Please state your name and business, I'm sorry, name and address of residence. Please limit yourself to five minutes.
I'm Kathy Gilbert. I live on South Street. And I came for one very minor purpose to complain about something, but I'm actually glad that I was here so that I could hear about everything that's happening in the borough because I've been woefully out of touch for a little while. And as I was sitting back here, I was making some notes of things to talk about. And I live on South Street that has been renovated. And I've said here before how very happy we are. However, one little hiccup with that, and I don't remember who spoke about the, the trees. I am one who is very unhappy with the tree in front of my house. When the renovation was happening, and this, this is not my original complaint, we were a little dismayed that we were losing a parking space in front of our house. Well, on top of it, we got a tree that, for the most part, has about one quarter brown leaves, which looks as if it's in a constant state of dying. And I don't remember the name of the tree, but I have spoken to Susan Nagle about that. And so she said that she would take it under advisement and bring it to whomever. And so I'm hoping in the future to get a new tree. If you have a town hall, it should be earlier than 7:00 p.m. And it would be nice if it would start maybe at 6:00. People would be more likely to show up because by 7:00 o'clock, everybody settled in for the evening, at least in the winter time. Judy, my Garmin time did not start until about 2010, so I was not involved in anything that went back any further than that. And the main reason that I came this evening is because, as many of you know, I started my business at 221 Chambersburg Street, and I have Gettysburg Day Spa. And we have, we're finally selling 221 Chambersburg Street. And it went on the market and four days later, we were in contract. And with that, the closing date is going to be February 18th. By the end of January, on January 31st, we have to purchase our apartment licensing. And then 18 days later, we will sell the property. It's not so much a problem that we have to get licensing for the apartment, but that it is either non-transferable, it is not prorated, and that the new owners will also have to purchase licensing as well so that the borough will receive double licensing over a matter of 18 days. So I am coming to you requesting that if I have to pay the apartment fees, which are $40, we have three apartments inside 221 Chambersburg Street, that it can either be prorated and/or for a matter of 18 days, it can be transferred to the new owners. Something to consider. And that would be $120, which is a penny in the bucket of what we've all just been talking about. But it's the principle of the, of the idea that for 18 days, the borough is going to get double license monies. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Public comment.
Pause and edit directly highlights my issue for tonight. I'm Marcy Bevenhour. I live at 238 West Middle Street here in Gettysburg. I also run Gettysburg Print Framership. That's out of town, doesn't care. The parking on the square is my issue. And you said about how you park at Walmart and you walk in. I park directly in front of the doors, walk 20 feet and get a cart. If I'm getting one thing, one thing, I get that cart. It could be right inside the door. I get that cart. Because I have very unstable knees, I am a disabled veteran, and I cannot walk around Walmart without that cart or I will be on my ass at least once, if not multiple times. I cannot walk from the parking garage to the square. It is physically impossible for me to do so. And I'm only 53. If there's not a parking space on the square, if I'm going to a local business on the square, I don't go because I cannot walk that distance. If you eliminate those parking spaces, myself and everyone like me who has walking issues cannot go to those businesses ever again. Ever. Because I cannot walk from the parking structure to those businesses. I can walk from the parking structure to Gallery 30, and that's about it. And that's a struggle some days. And believe it or not, today was a good knee day. That's all.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's it, that's all.
Public comment.
Dave Peters, 13 Lincoln Square to Baltimore Street. I promised I'd be back. First, I want to do something really nice and acknowledge all the help we had from the borough. I was on the committee for the New Year's Eve celebration. And to think we were able to put that together in 45 days, and I think the community had a really good time. It would have been impossible without the borough's help, not only in funding the part you did, but Charles, Karen, Robbie, the police, and the whole staff that worked together with us to make that happen. And I can't thank you guys enough. You made it a really fun community event. Boy, a lot of things were talked about tonight. I'll have to get my measuring tape out tomorrow and think about that 60-inch clearance on the sidewalk and see what that would do, what kind of dining we can provide or not provide for the community. I'm still really concerned about the additional parking issues. We're going to lose X number of car spaces on Baltimore. And actually, this whole thing about the square, that was not in any of the original planning to do that when this one 2A, 2B planning went on. It wasn't talked about at all in that plan to remove parking. That's a totally relatively new development. And I, I don't see any of these sketches, if they've been made. Maybe they're in progress yet, but there's nothing out there for the public really to look at. I think the open meetings and community thing is the way to go because we probably have some good ideas about it. On our worst day for blue and gray, which is leased to my son, we received five tractor trailer loads of different merchandise. I'm going to have to figure out how to do that. We'll, we'll figure it out, I'm sure. I'm already eliminating one. Hopefully, within a month or two, we won't have our trash out on the sidewalk for parks' trash to pick up. Been working hard on that. We will also now be fully recycling plastic, aluminum, glass, and cardboard, every stream that we can. And that's thanks to Adams Mission, working with them to do that. I would love to hear a proposal, really how much parking is really going at the parking garage and underutilized. And that's very nice for the north side of the square, but can we have some sort of parking accommodation on the south side? That JP lot has been really misused and sat there for a long time, and the county needs to work with the borough. And I, I don't know if, I think there were plans for a small deck parking in there, if that can be looked at incorporating. Obviously, the infrastructure is horrible and needs to be done as part of the project. Within the last three years, I think, we've had two major water leaks in the street, one on Baltimore's side of our business, which we had leaking into the basement. I was told repeatedly it was my problem. Eventually, the leak came up through the street. Meanwhile, I contracted to have my part $25,000 to make sure I wouldn't get water that floods my basement. Then there was another one right in front of the circle just a couple months ago that closed the street. So the infrastructure really needs to be part of the project. I don't think there's any question. Marcy had a great comment. Really, Gettysburg has become a bedroom community. Maybe not so much in town, but all the surrounding areas, all the retirement communities, they do have mobility issues. So whatever planning, we need to make sure there's handicap parking, ways for those people to get around. The customers I get to talk to, and I'm in the business almost every day, parking is the number one nasty thing they have to say about Gettysburg. Availability, pricing. Well, so in this community thing, maybe we can talk, maybe we have some ideas to help you with that instead of being the main funding or our major funding stream for the borough. This might be an opportunity, but really, you're just shifting the cost to the businesses. The businesses are going to have the staff to deal with those coupons. We need electronic device, which wasn't mentioned, what that is.
Yes, get it conclude.
Okay, is that a cellphone or whatever? We'll talk later. But thank you for bringing this up. Look forward to the community meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Public comment.
My name is Nancy Goodman-Stead. I live at 307 Baltimore Street. I would ask a big favor when you, if, when you have a community meeting, and I look forward to it, instead of this walking around and writing down pieces of, on pieces of paper, tablets of paper questions, it really would be wonderful to have an open discussion. Because she may ask questions that I didn't even think about, and it would just be nice to be able to talk to somebody as opposed to, I wrote things down on pieces of paper here, never heard anything back about anything. So it'd be so nice if it could be an interactive type of thing. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Any further public comment? Don't be shy. All right, I'm not seeing any, so we will adjourn for the evening. Thank you, everybody.